Is the Pledge of Allegiance and Mike Blackwell, could you please lead us in the pledge? And I'll just remind everyone to go on mute during the pledge so we can follow.
Okay, if you have a flag to face and over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Item three is the roll call. Cecilia, could you please call the roll for us?
All right, Commissioner Brown. All right, Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Chair Pro-Tam Wu.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell.
Here.
And Chair Rulon.
Here. Next order is the Special Order of Business. We have an item to select as a selection of the Coastal Advisory Committee member. Cecilia, I'm assuming this is because of the recent changing back to the previous ordinances regarding committees. Am I right about that?
Yeah, so one of the new commissioners is currently a member of the Coastal Advisory Committee, whose term will expire on August 30th, 2021, when the Coastal Advisory Committee disbands. As you know, the new planning commissioners aren't slated to assume their duties until July 1st, which means that Mr. McCoffin's position on the CAC will expire upon him assuming his planning commission position. So the Planning Commission appoints one voting representative to the Coastal Advisory Committee, which is currently Commissioner Kaczynski, who will go off the commission on June 30th. So we'll have the loss of two members technically on the CAC effective July 1, which means the Coastal Advisory Committee will not have a quorum. So to ensure that the Coastal Advisory Committee has a quorum for two months to allow it to close out its business, the Clerk's Office is recommending that the Planning Commission at today's meeting appoint one of its members as the new representative to the CAC.
And this... And I'm guessing that, am I correct in assuming this is only for a two-month period? So Cecilia, I don't know if you heard my question. I just wanted to clarify, this is only for a two-month period? Is that correct?
Yes, it would just be for the final two months of the Coastal Advisory Committee's existence. So the logical choice would be for the Planning Commission to appoint Gary McCoffin as the Planning Commission's representative. But as long as the Planning Commission appoints somebody, then the CAC will have at least four voting members and a quorum for the remaining two meetings.
I understand. Then I will move that we appoint Gary McCoffin. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Chair, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Gary is not a planning commissioner yet, and it looks like Commissioner Bart Crandall is only a choice for us. Can we elect Gary? Can we appoint Gary who is not a member of the Planning Commission?
You can make him the Planning Commission's representative to the CAC effective July 1.
Then why don't we leave it to the next commission?
Which he the part of it?
I don't know that.
That would make more sense, really, because he's already been assigned. He has a seat on the Coastal Advisory Committee that has expiration date. So it would just keep that current body intact until that time. So I think what Cecilia is asking is that we look into the future and, you know, make a nomination based on what we know about one person or two people, actually. One who's not a planning commissioner, one who is. I don't know that Bart would be interested in that. So we could, is it possible to defer this or to continue this discussion as?
It's our last stated meeting until we clock out.
Yeah, so they won't have a quorum if they need to meet before the next planning commission, before the new planning commission is seated. The fact is, normally, Commissioner, I agree with you, leave this to the next body, but it's only for two months. It sounds like that committee may be disbanded, and this person will be a planning commissioner in a couple of weeks and is currently on the Coastal Advisory Committee. So it's more of, really what we're doing here is allowing the Coastal Advisory Committee to continue in its current state.
Sure, I have nothing against a particular individual. I just thought he's not a kind of planning commissioner, and we're appointing him. It just sounds weird about it. Whatever.
Who's the current member of the Planning Commission that was assigned to the Coastal Advisory Committee? Anybody?
Chris.
Chris, would you?
Well, he was the last, so we didn't make an appointment. We stopped making an appointment because the zoning had changed, excuse me, the ordinance had changed. So...
But then they put the ordinance on stay, right? Have you been attending Coastal Advisory Committee meetings, Chris?
I have, but my term is over at the end of this month.
So I think it's kind of an odd situation because of the way the ordinances have been stayed and reactivated, and we're coming to the end of our term and all that sort of a thing. It's just an odd set of circumstances. But the bottom line is if we put this gentleman, if we appoint this gentleman as of July 1st to be a representative, it will allow the Coastal Advisory Committee to complete its work as it's been working.
I agree. I support it regardless of procedure.
Jim, I will second your most.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint, and forgive me, I didn't write the gentleman's name down. Could you repeat his name, please?
Gary McCorgan.
Gary McCorgan.
But we empowered to appoint someone that's not even on the commission yet?
Well, we'll do it. I'll amend my motion, and I'll say that we will appoint him effective July 1st.
And I will continue my second.
So we have a motion from Jim and a second from Bart. Any other discussion on this?
No.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. Next item is five. We have one set of minutes from the adjourned regular Planning Commission meeting of June 2nd. Is there, are there requests for changes or a motion?
A move you approve.
I'll second. Motion by Don, motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Rulon. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Rulon votes aye, passes unanimously. Our next item is oral and written communications. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items to the Planning Commission electronically. Material may be emailed to www.san-clemente.org/pcpubliccomment. Transmitted by 3:00 PM on Planning Commission meeting days is recommended. The Planning Commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Cecilia, do we have any communications regarding anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
No, I have not received any request to speak under this item.
Thank you. The next item is our consent calendar. We have nothing on our consent calendar tonight. Item eight is public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. We have one public hearing tonight, 1502 South El Camino Real. Katie, you're taking care of this for us, so you have the floor.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here with you all tonight for your last meeting altogether. I'm just going to pull up my presentation here. All right, so this proposed project, it's a proposal for a new two-story commercial building at 1502 South El Camino Real. Because it's a new commercial building, it requires a site plan permit and a cultural heritage permit and architectural overlay. There we go. So you can see the location highlighted here at the intersection of South El Camino Real and West Avenue de Valencia, abutting the I-5 freeway southbound on-ramp. As such, this is a general plan designated gateway area. The other quarters of the intersection you'll recognize, at the very top of the screen there, is the vacant Tommy's Restaurant site, which this Planning Commission recently reviewed and approved the Shoreline Dental project there. And then at 1430 South El Camino Real, there is a potential new mixed-use project that could be coming in shortly. So this whole corner could really be seeing some exciting development here very soon. The project site, which you can currently see its kind of current situation here, it includes demolition of the vacant Top Toon site, which you can see, including the ground-mounted sign, which you see there on the right, and that lighting as well. As since auto-oriented uses such as gas stations are no longer permitted, they're no longer permitted on El Camino Real, redevelopment of this site is quite desirable. And I have talked to a few residents that are excited to see some redevelopment here at all. So the project site is 10,731 square feet. Originally, it sloped down from El Camino Real towards the alley in the rear. The site was graded to make it level with a retaining wall at the rear along the alley. The project proposes parking under the development off of the alley. Above the lower parking level at the El Camino Real grade is a 2,975-square-foot restaurant space with a large outdoor dining patio, a corner entry tower, which you can see here, and surface parking, which is kind of on the back of this picture. The second floor, again accessed by that primary entry tower, consists of 2,097-square-foot office space. The building steps down with the grade, which you can see here a bit, with the tallest roof element at the intersection and the lower elements at the rear. As you can see here on the site plan, the portion that's dotted at the top is really just to show something for Caltrans for their sort of area of influence, because this project was reviewed by Caltrans. So it's hard to kind of see what that's for on this, so that is what that is. So as you can see, the building is located along the El Camino Real and Valencia street frontages, with the parking to the side and under the building, consistent with design guidelines and general plan policies. Vehicles would enter through the driveway on El Camino Real, which you can see there at the top of your screen. That was, again, modified to meet Caltrans requirements. Vehicles can then park in the surface spaces or proceed down the vehicle ramp at the rear of the site to the lower parking level. Vehicular exiting only occurs from the lower alley driveway, and that was really a requirement by Caltrans. There's no way to modify that. The plan really makes great use of the available area, which at a bit under 11,000 square feet is a relatively small lot for a commercial development, particularly one fitting of a gateway location. The plan meets all of the development standards, including height, setbacks, lot coverage, floor area ratio. The applicant proposed share parking, shared parking, again, to ensure that the site can be utilized for a quality project rather than an abundance of parking, which does meet the goal of the South El Camino Real general plan focus area, which is to create a transitional area between the Del Mar T-zone and I-5, with the general plan says with ocean views, mixed-use housing, and local serving, commercial uses and restaurants. This area is supposed to strike a balance between vehicles, bikes, and pedestrians. The basis for the shared parking request is that the two uses, office and dine-in restaurant, have different peak parking demand times. In this case, the applicant utilized the ULI time of day factors, which is a percentage of parking utilized by each use at each hour, with the city's theoretical parking ratios. The applicant further represents that due to the walkability, the bikeability, and the general mixed-use nature of the neighborhood, that the reduced parking is appropriate and provides for the best use and development of this lot. Landscape is significantly improved from the existing development on the subject site, even when it was not vacant, which, because it had almost no landscaping. This proposal includes landscape that exceeds the landscape coverage requirement in the zoning ordinance. Additionally, you'll notice that the applicant did, sorry, you'll notice that if you were on the Designer View Subcommittee, the applicant swapped out the pineapple guava trees on the plan near the Valencia frontage for myrtles, and also increased the amount of native species on the plan to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Three new Washingtonia robusta palms will be placed in the landscape planter in the row between the sidewalk and the street at approximately 30-foot intervals, which is also consistent with our design guidelines. So when the Designer View Subcommittee reviewed the plans, they were overall very complimentary of the building design and the landscape. Since DRC review, as I previously mentioned, the applicant did update the entry driveway on El Camino Real to meet Caltrans requirements. And again, they did update the landscape plan to include more natives and to replace the pineapple guava trees with another species per DRC. For the elevations, here at the top, you can see the El Camino Real frontage and the Avenue de Valencia frontage on the bottom. The design maintains the relatively simple design aesthetic of traditional Spanish colonial revival architecture, and it uses traditional materials. You can see there the smooth white stucco, the two-piece clay tile roofing with low-pitched roofs, balconies to provide outdoor areas and visual articulation, wood and wrought iron accents, and sage green windows and doors with divided lights. Notable here on these elevations, you can see the open-air tower element at the corner used to accent the main entry to both the restaurant and the second-floor office, which also emphasizes the blending of indoor and outdoor spaces, often seen with Spanish colonial revival architecture. You can see on the Valencia frontage there on the lower right how the building steps down with the topography toward the rear alley. This one here is the rear alley frontage at the top, and then also the side that faces the freeway on-ramp. The applicant continues the high-quality design and materials on these elevations as well, consistent with the design guidelines. On the far right there, you can see where, sorry, on the far right of the top elevation, you can see where the trash will be accessed and taken out off of the alley, again, per design guidelines. For ease of use and accessibility, there is a trash chute there above it that can be accessed from the surface parking level. The enclosure is built into the retaining wall and will have sliding barn doors painted. It's not shown on here, but a dark wood color to match the building, and that is called out on the elevations. So overall, the project would be a welcome addition to this freeway gateway location and should fit with the character and design of the proposed Shoreline Dental project, which was recently approved. The project meets the development standards in the zoning ordinance if the shared parking is approved and is consistent with design guidelines and general plan policies. And those consistencies are all outlined in the report and the draft resolution of approval. Shared parking is appropriate for this location and that there are multiple transportation modes available in the area, the mixed-use nature of the neighborhood, and the differing peak hours for each use. Therefore, staff does recommend that the commission approve the project with the conditions of approval as drafted in Resolution PC 21-010 and determine that the project is categorically exempt from further environmental review under CEQA. Staff has not received any comments from the public. I have had a few phone conversations with a few people, particularly around the time of Designer View Subcommittee, who were just interested in what was going in there and just excited to see some new development, but no public comments for this hearing. So this concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. And as there are several members of the applicant team here, including the applicant Sanjay Patel and the architect Michael Luna, should you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Katie. I think maybe before we open it for questions, why don't we hear from the applicant, who has 10 minutes for a presentation, if they wish? Michael, you're on mute.
There we go. Sorry about that. Yes, hello to everybody once again. Little background on this site, we've been looking at this for quite a while. We've been working with Mr. Wright, who's on the, Jason Wright, and his family has had it for so many years, this property. And they decided, quite a while back, they said, you know, it's probably time to sell the property. And for over several years now, there's been several proposals that haven't made it all the way to Planning Commission, but certainly at staff level. And there were a lot of different uses proposed here. And one of the biggest roadblocks was potential traffic impacts to this unusual intersection where we've got a pretty heavily traveled off-ramp on southbound I-5, and then a on-ramp very close to it on southbound I-5. And of course, busy El Camino Real. So there really hasn't been a simple solution for addressing, how do we put something on this site that's going to be compatible with the neighborhood and not negatively impact the intersections and the flow of traffic? And that's been one of the biggest impacts that definitely affected my design approach. We ended up working very closely with Caltrans. Caltrans was not an easy group to work with, as maybe some people have heard before. They were, it's black and white with them. But we were able to, once we showed how things were circulating, and we do have, you know, our one-way entrance on El Camino Real. It's accessed both southbound and northbound from El Camino Real, but it's a one-way entrance off of El Camino Real. We had to be certain minimum distances away from the off-ramp and the on-ramp and so forth. And Caltrans took a heavy look at this. And the fact that we had one exit point, we have one exit point proposed at the alley, and that's what these alleys were designed to do, is to take most of these traffic loads off of El Camino Real. And so taking our exits out of there was very well received by Caltrans. So circulation and safety and Caltrans and so forth was, and traffic was really important. But also so important was the fact that this is a gateway site. The gateway aspect of this project, you know, we had to have some good Spanish architecture here. And given this corner, I really needed to charge up that corner and make that the architecture on the corner itself be bold on that corner and inviting the open-air concept from, you know, rather than placing a handicap ramp outside, we were able to tuck the handicap ramp inside to get to the dining plaza. We were able to put the stairs in there. That whole little corner tower element is enclosed with wrought iron with some accent Spanish tile down below it on the Victorious, not Victoria, what is that street?
Valencia.
And we wanted, you know, we had an opportunity to create a patio, but we needed to get the patio so it was orientating towards the ocean view. And we wanted to have it be really visible, not only from El Camino Real, but also Valencia. So we really tried to create this feeling of garden. We have a pretty good landscape buffer between our building and Valencia. But then it opens up to a trellis element, and the patio is very well perceived. And so I think between the power, excuse me, the tower and the the outside dining area, it has a real garden feel, and we wanted to make it really inviting. Because this element of town, somehow this site got left out of being, of receiving the MU31 zoning designation as part of the general plan update. It's the only parcel in the whole block in this whole stretch, for some reason it was left out. But it's still going to benefit from the mix, because everything else around it is mixed-use on El Camino Real. It's going to benefit from the synergy that's created, that we're going to see eventually on that stretch of town with these mixed-use projects. So in the mixed-use environment, that whole pedestrian element is what the mixed-use formula is all about. You know, we've got every opportunity to have not only the activity on El Camino Real flow into this project and connect to that pedestrian atmosphere, but, and from what I've seen, every restaurant on this stretch of El Camino Real, folks just come right up the street from Southwest San Clemente. They flow up to El Camino Real either on foot or on their bikes. And you see it all the time, for example, with the Bagel Shack, a few other food places that I've seen there. The, oh, I forget what it's called. There's another couple of restaurants, Italian restaurant.
MRT.
Yeah, and these folks just walk up there. They walk up, you know, go for a stroll with their dog or their bikes, and they come up there. So I think that this site will be an extension of that activity. We worked really hard to come up with a circulation pattern that really minimizes the impact. Caltrans agreed, staff agreed. Zach mentioned he's seen a lot of proposals for this site over the years, and he said this is absolutely the best, least impactful that he has seen on this site. And I know from what Zach has said in the past, that he really liked this circulation pattern. Let's see. I think there's a great little synergy between having some offices upstairs during the day. These offices typically will shut down 5, you know, 5, 6:00 PM. And I used to have my office right next door to a restaurant in San Juan. And it's just great, you know, you flow in and out between the office space, clients and guests and so forth from the office environment. They utilize the restaurant as well. It's just a great, I think, the combination of some upstairs office and downstairs restaurant. So hopefully you like the architecture. We really tried, as I say, make it inviting and then to incorporate some really great traditional elements of this great Spanish colonial revival style. And that's probably all I have for now.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael. Let me open it up for questions. Don, your mute's off. You want to get us started?
Yeah, my mute's only off, because every time I unmute this thing, my iPad logs me off the whole Zoom meeting, but yeah, Katie, can we, or the applicant, probably go a little more discussion on the shared parking agreement and the differences of the various standards and how we resolve that, how staff is comfortable with that?
Yeah, sure. So the shared parking is based on shared parking analysis by LSA, which you'll find as attachment five in your Uh, which you'll find is attachment five in your packet. It's on page forty one. Uh, starts on page forty one. So what the applicant did here um was they utilized the city's. Theoretical partial parking ratios um for both the office and then the restaurant with outdoor dining. Um, and then they utilized uh the Urban Land Institute's time of day um factors. Which is sort of like a a percentage of. The um, the amount of parking you would expect that used to demand at, you know, a maximum time. Um, for each of those times. So, for example, um, the office is going to be very busy at, you know, ten A M. Um, whereas the restaurant is going to be very busy at six P M and also maybe at the lunch hour. Uh, and that's where some of that synergy comes in, where some of those office um. Workers may be at the restaurant for lunch, so you're not parking both of those vehicles. Um, so they utilize those time of day factors uh with the city's parking ratios to come up with this um. Amount of parking that would be required. Uh, and then again, that was also mitigated by just some of these other uh environmental factors. So they do have a bike graph. Um, a lot of people do already walk and bike in this area in addition to driving, obviously. Um, and so uh, we really felt that this was um kind of a highest and best use for this parcel. Uh, again, it's not zoned mixed use like the the property across the street that's currently vacant uh across Valencia. Um, and so they don't have that kind of uh capability. Uh, and you know, we may not want something that's that's super small and has a lot of parking. Um, on the site because that's what you might get if you parked it at hundred percent of the city's parking ratios. Because it is a very important site. Um, and we are looking forward to some um notable architecture on this quarter. And I think with shoreline, um, we're getting that. And I think with this project, we're we're getting that. And so um, I think that um, like Michael talked about a little bit, that that. There's a lot of um different things that contribute to the ability to really use the shared parking here.
May I?
Please, Michael.
I I apologize. I forgot to mention and introduce, make some introductions. We have um. Ken Wilhelm of LSA is with us as well. Uh, they're the author of the parking study. We also have Mike Bunganik, the landscape architect is here with us. Uh, and of course Sanjay Patel, the owner. Um, and Jorge Stamback, uh, who who has an interest in the property as well and uh. And Jason, I think, uh, who's was a previous landowner and has been helping with the 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 transition of the ownership as well. Uh, hopefully I didn't miss anybody on our team.
Okay, thank you. Don, did you want to go deeper there?
A little uh follow along with Katie is the rest of the D M T. Uh, design management team, they're comfortable with the shared parking with the lack of the fifty percent ratios and the different standards. So when you went into D M T, there were no conditions from Zach or or some of the other functions in the city staff that coordinated this project.
There weren't any comments from um any of the D M T members. Um, I mean, you could, I could defer to Zach. Um, to see what, you know, engineering thoughts were potentially on this. I don't want to speak for them. Uh, but they did not provide um any comments. I do want to point out that we did include um in the conditions of approval, seven point fifteen, which is our standard parking condition. Um, that you see on every site that has shared parking or any sort of um. Unique arrangement, um where if there are issues, we can go back to the applicant. Um, but if there are issues in practice, um, because the theory didn't work out for for whatever reason, we can work with them to create. Uh, a parking management plan or figure out what we can do. Obviously, you are a little bit limited in that. Um, you know, the development is what it is, but sometimes there are some other factors that we can work in, and that's what. Um, condition seven point two uh point fifteen addresses.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wu.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. Uh, first is for. For Katie, uh, in your attachment for regarding the landing, uh, general plan, land use. Policy thirteen point oh four uh views. And he said it's unclear. In the comment, it says a height analysis and a cross section, including the freeway elevation is needed to verify. This information. Now, we we have a height elevation.
I will. That did, that is my error, Commissioner Wu. That did not get updated from um the designer view subcommittee analysis. And and that's my error. I should have updated that.
Well, that's fine. We we have a height analysis here. That's the, and it's okay. Um, but um. Did the applicant provide any cross-sections? Did they provide? Talk to Caltrans, verify the elevation of the freeway because it says appears to be lower or at the same elevation of the freeway. Is that a verified? Do we have a survey map? Do we have a cross-section or any perspective? To evaluate the view.
Caltrans um doesn't necessarily have the elevations, at least not available to us. Um, we do have an elevation that um we have assumed on prior projects, including Shoreline Dental. Um, and this project uh is one foot below um the freeway at like a, an adjacent location. Um. So that's what uh what we went off of. We didn't feel that we needed um. Any further view analysis because when, because it meets the height limitation, they're not asking for any variance. Um, when the uh requirements for this um property went in, it was just, or the for the zone went in. It was just that it be um. Below the freeway. So um. You know, I think that those types of analyses went into those design guidelines at the time, so each individual applicant didn't have to do that.
Okay, um, my second question regarding the parking analysis, you 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 wrote in the report. Pointing out to some of the concern over the parking analysis, what is the basis? Parking consultant use. Have you conferred with the applicant's parking consultant to express that concern? And I assume you're dead, or what is their response?
I didn't talk um directly with the um with LSA. Uh, they are on the line here and they are confident in their analysis. Um, and I um, you know, they are the licensed professionals in that, in that um specialty. So I would, i- if you have concerns or questions specifically related to the methodologies that were used. Um, or the level of um certainty that they have, I would defer to um Ken Wilhelm on that.
Sure.
Can I respond?
Mr. Wilhelm, yes, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Let me, let me explain, elaborate my question a little bit further before you respond.
Sure.
And your analysis seemed to be um cherry picking the best information for your use and create that desired result. For example, your base number is from the city zoning code. The U L I methodology is what we would call a scientific approach. And those numbers are based on the I T generation, parking generation, based on survey. Right? So we get that eighty-five percent threshold number, and we know that fifteen percent of the time, the party may exceed. That number, but we use eighty-five to give us a little bit of cushion. And then that's a basis. And then you apply the time of use factor to to create that shared parking analysis. Now, um, it's a different system. Uh, when you mix them up, the validity validity of that approach is compromised. Also, when I look at your time of use factor, you only used the the time of use value for the visitor. And you omitted the employee is the time of use. Padding numbers, which is typically higher than a visitor. So my feeling is that overall, um, it's not really a scientifically sound analysis. Because you you picked the best for your use from both approaches and it created something that's neither scientific. Nor according to our zoning code. It's a mix and a match. Um, how do you see about this approach? Uh, because if we want to, we want to use the U L I numbers, you will have substantially higher parking to start with. Even before you apply the time of use, the shared parking analysis. For example, fine dining and just look it up. And for the weekday, we don't worry about a weekend. We know that a weekend, there's no, you know, there's a minimal office worker there. So it's all about a weekend when you combine we uh restaurants and office. But even on weekends, the basic ratio is about a thirteen, over over thirteen for visitors and over two for employees combined of fifteen point five. If you were, you use that number, you will get substantially more parking demand to start with.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Wu and the other commissioners. Yeah, my name is Ken Wilhelm with LSA. I'm uh the traffic and parking consultant for the applicants. Um, I can tell you that this methodology that we use, again, just identifying what the city code would require. And then you're right, using those time of day factors from the Urban Land Institute, which by the way is a nationally recognized. Methodology. In fact, I've done other parking studies in the city of San Clemente using the same methodology. And and again, it just, it simply identifies based on national surveys of by the hour. Um, what parking, peak parking demand occurs on site for a specific use. And as you saw, you know, I was, I'm assuming you're looking at, again, attachment five, page forty-four of your packet. That shows the table that, and again, shows um the time of day, the seven spaces required. For the office building and office use. And then the time of day factors for a fine dining type of restaurant. For the time of day for the nineteen spaces required by the city code. For that use, um for fine dining, um, you know, that use tends to peak during later in the evening, right? So in this table, it shows that around seven, eight, nine o'clock at night. Is when you would have full capacity of the restaurant, including employees and visitors. And at that time of day, you've got little, if any, use of the office. And so again, I I I hear what you're saying, but again, using this methodology that is widely accepted. And used in the city of San Clemente before, we would meet the parking requirements based on.
Okay, anything else on that, Commissioner Wu? Any other questions about that right at this time?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Kozinski.
Uh, thank you. Um, I I just want to get something clear regarding this parking issue that Don brought up. Uh, the current number of spaces on the lot are enough to not necessitate, necessitate a um parking agreement, share parking agreement. Is that correct? Or are they looking to have a shared parking agreement? I was confused. Uh, that Katie.
Um, so they don't act, uh, so since it's all on the same site. Um, they don't actually need to have like an official recorded um agreement. There aren't two sites involved. Um, so this is more like what we would do for uh. Gosh, the outlets is not a good example because there are many sites there. Um, but for like a shopping center that was all on one site. Um, and it's just understood and and what staff does when we have these sort of instances is. We make sure the mix of uses stays the same. Um, or that any other use that goes in there has a lower parking demand. Um, so in this case, uh, there is a condition of approval in here that limits the number of seats for the restaurant. Because the restaurant is to be identified yet, um, and there aren't specific seating arrangements shown on the plans because of that. Um, so the maximum number, number of seats has been established per the conditions of approval. Um, so that's kind of how we try to control that um shared parking arrangement.
Yes, seven point, seven point one eight says ninety-two seats. That range needs my, okay, so they don't need a shared parking agreement at this point.
Well, so the city approves shared parking for the site, but they don't need an agreement between.
Okay.
Two landowners.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, and with the restaurant at ninety-two seats, um. I've noticed that the only noise uh conditions are uh. Seven point two four and seven point two five, seven point two four dealing with loading and unloading of vehicles. And seven point two five being um maintenance active, maintenance activities. Since they're going to have a restaurant, uh, I'm assuming music. Uh, is there any thought into having a condition on the generation of of noise for music? Or amplified or not amplified?
Um, so amplified, well, no, um, yeah, amplified sound doesn't include just background music. Um, and they did not apply for a conditional use permit for amplified sound. So we, we really don't need a condition for that. We can certainly add one in. Um, if that's something that we are concerned about, but because the code requires a conditional use permit for that, if they wanted to do. Um, actual amplified sound, um, for example, if they wanted to have, I don't know, a DJ or something like that. Um. Then the code requires that they come in and get approval for that. Um, our interpretation, and Cecilia can correct me if I'm wrong, um, our interpretation is that um. We don't allow um speakers on patios unless they have a C P for this. Um, but it is a little gray in the code, and so we've had to make some uh interpretations. So Cecilia can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
And acoustic music?
So live entertainment is, requires a C P, whether it's indoors or out. And they did not apply for a C P for live entertainment. The C P in this case is for the shared parking, and those are the only findings that we made. So if they wanted to do anything acoustic, just live music is going to require a C P. So we can evaluate the impacts at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, uh, Commissioner Crandall.
Uh, yes, first question is probably for Michael. Um. Michael, when you were designing the trash enclosure, it's set, did you work with C R N R? Uh, yes, yes, we did talk with them and by golly, now they want three bins. Um, my question, my concern is um mainly them scheduling their truck. There's no other space on there using the big bins, I don't believe. Um. And there's a carriage unit, there are a couple of carriage units, I guess, that face onto the alley. And just want to make sure, um, and maybe Katie can answer this too, if we can control when they do the pickups. So it's not imposing, because it's a transition alley from commercial to residential. And um, if we can get a window, Katie, that uh doesn't disturb or reduces. The impact on the residential on the other side of the alley.
Um, so to answer kind of your first question, C R N R did reviewed it. They said they will serve it. Um, and then it will be, um, Michael said he's already talked to them as well. It's up to kind of the applicant and C um, C R N R to decide what the appropriate number of pickups is. As Michael mentioned, they do require three bins now. Um, one for trash recycling and and organic waste. So um. That may increase, that that's going to increase the capacity that they have. So it might reduce the number of pickups that we would see otherwise if there were just trash and recycling. Um, but with regard to um the the pickups, I I, that's something that I would have to discuss with C R N R that I have not discussed with them. Um, regarding the um, because the residential is close. Um. I know in. Often with C R N R, you don't have a lot of options. Um, but it's something we could look into, but it's not something that I can guarantee if we put a condition in that C R N R would agree to it at this point. Um, because it was not discussed with them, unless Michael has additional information.
I understand that, but we've got to protect the adjacent property owner from a six A M uh pickup. Um, for bins and it's looks like it's going to take three trucks because it's three different uh. Uh, types of bins. So that's going to be a lot of imposed traffic. You know, if they.
Yes.
That uh, and I don't, we have a city standard of when these things can occur.
It's after seven A M, which is also C R N R's kind of standard. It's after seven AM, which is also CRNR's kind of standard. Like they could pick up at seven AM. And then typically there, um, I don't know which one would go first in this location. Um, but typically it's all three trucks wouldn't show up at seven AM. If one were to show up at seven AM, it would be the one, say recycling. Yeah, okay.
But while we're doing our discussion this evening, think about possibly a condition that would make sure we protect the adjacent carriage units. Kind of trash and deliveries. Michael, have you done a schematic layouts of the restaurant and kitchen and the offices upstairs?
Uh, I, nothing on the offices upstairs. Just really just shell space upstairs to, to be laid out as tenants required. But downstairs, yeah, I did do some very rough restaurant layout. Just in essence, trying to determine where a kitchen might go and thus where a hood might go and where the restrooms might go.
Okay.
And that's it.
Because what I was leading up to is these parking standards are on gross square footage, and I think for the office, you use the entire floor. And there's going to be a bunch of ducks going up through that office space up to the roof. And do you have a feel if you're going to be able to get the occupancy there, you're thinking up there or might be one less parking space required for that office?
Yeah, in, in actuality, I did kind of do roughly layout, some tables. But between kitchen demand and, and, uh, you know, the type of space that a typical kitchen will consume in terms of square footage and restrooms and so forth. And typically, most folks want the bar of some sort. You know, it's, it's tight. I mean, it's, it's not, we're not swimming in square footage there. I think ninety-two based upon other restaurants that I've done with the square footage that we have in the patio that we have, I think a maximum of ninety-two is appropriate.
Well, I'm not, I was thinking more of the office space up above, which you're going to lose out of that space. Because I think we're figuring seven spaces for the office. If you have to take up X amount of square footage, it could reduce down to six.
Yeah, that's possible, but, you know, again, we're trying to adhere, looking at the code, you know, based on square footage of a space, says we need seven spaces for that office component. Holding on to that, I, you know.
No, I wasn't saying you need to do it. I'm just thinking that, that, that's not necessarily a hard number. You lose X amount by duck space going up, that doesn't get counted in the square footage in the office space.
You're right. Yes, you're right. So yeah, maybe that frees up some and, and we also.
Oh, I, I'm afraid.
It frees up.
He might free, froze up. He might have to reboot.
Well, he, he answered the question.
Oh, okay. All right. Good. Well, then we'll let, while he's rebooting then, Bart, um, do you have questions for anyone else?
I, I do for Katie. Who maintains the alley? City?
It's a public alley.
So that is a yes, that it is a city.
Yes.
And there was one, uh, condition of approval by engineering that says, they need to merge the property. There's only one piece of property, right?
I would have to defer to Zach on that.
Bart, Zach Ponson with engineering. When you look at the assessors map and the GIS layer on there, it looks like they're paying one assessor bill, a tax bill. But legally, it still looks like it's three parcels.
Okay. So that, that's just a heads up to them that they got to solve that.
There's a weird technicality where technically it could have been legally merged in the past, but you got to look back at the, what rule it was granted and stuff. But I, I do believe it's three parcels technically.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that, that's all I've got, Jim.
Okay. Commissioner Brown.
A part question for you of, well, Michael tries to reboot, but in the shell, there wasn't, I don't, did he mention he was going to plan restroom for upstairs in the office area? Would that decrease the amount of parking?
Uh, no, that would be, I think, an auxiliary use for the offices and still count in the gross square footage Okay. for the office. But the duct work and anything else that penetrates the floor and takes up the course does not.
Assuming the, the restroom's got to be aligned for plumbing anyway.
I'm back.
Okay, um, I, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add to that, Michael. Bart did say that he felt you answered his question, so unless you wanted to add something, we can, we can move on.
Uh, no, I don't think I need to add anything.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Blackwell.
Yes, thanks, Jim. So a question for the applicant. Well, Michael, is, did you mention that your landscape architect is, is present?
Yes, Mike Bunganik. Are you there? Hello, Mike.
And Mr. Bunganik, you're, uh, if you can hear us, you're on mute, so we can't hear you.
I see him in the call. There he is.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Michael. I, um, a question for you. During design review, there was discussion of the three specimen trees that were proposed on Avenue de Valencia.
Yeah.
And Katie had mentioned in her, in her presentation that the, the guavas were removed. Uh, and that was really pursuant to our discussion, to the design review subcommittee discussion uh, with you. And so that was changed out. During that discussion, there was a mention of, I think one of the recommendations was crate myrtle, multi-trunk crate myrtle. And what we ended up here tonight with is the, like, uh, the little leaf myrtle, Tristania lirina.
Tristania lirina, yes.
And I'm wondering why you endeavored to go that route over the, uh, the smaller crate myrtle?
Um, I, uh, talked with the owner, Sanjay Patel. He had mentioned to me that he is, uh, not in favor of the crate myrtle. And, um, he asked me to come up with a different solution. So we went ahead and picked the Tristania lirina, which has a very shallow root system. It's evergreen, pretty much full to the ground. And it, uh, it fit the, the need very nicely. And so it's, we have an evergreen tree instead of a deciduous tree.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. I think, um, the recommendation was made so that we could expose some of the beautiful architecture at certain times of the year and, uh, provide, um, you know, a different look other times of the year when, when the trees were in bloom. But, um, are you familiar with the growth habit of the, uh, of the current proposed tree in this environment?
The Tristania, Tristania lirina?
Yes.
Um, it would perform, uh, very, very fine in this environment. We use it a lot in, in parking areas that have like wells that are very shallow, very narrow. They're not very wide because of the root systems. And that planter is really not that wide. And it's, uh, it needs a, a tree that doesn't have an extensive root system. And, uh, so I ran that by the owner and he instructed me to, uh, to put an evergreen tree in its location.
Okay. Do you anticipate that that canopy would reach greater than twenty feet in width?
No, the canopy would not be greater, uh, than that. The Tristania lirina typically is more of an upgrowing, um, pyramidal type, uh, narrow type plant that can be shaped like that. And so to answer your question, no, it does not have this large canopy like an oak tree.
Okay. Yeah, I've seen them grow twenty plus feet and, and canopy in the right environment. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were thinking about that only because of the narrow width of that backer curb to the building, just not a lot of space there. But I see you have, it looked like to be standards. So you'd probably get that canopy height to not cause a problem for pedestrian access, et cetera.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I'm not totally opposed to that. I just, I wanted to get some logic on, on why you went that route. But, uh, you've answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, that's all, uh, that's all I have, Jim.
Okay. Uh, are there any more questions for staff or the applicant? Seeing none, um, I will.
Chair, I have a question. Uh, Katie, for the proposed, the condition, seven point eighteen, that reads the maximum number of seating in the restaurant, including indoor and outdoor seats, is limited to ninety-two seats based on parking provided. So, um, so the city allows for sixteen outdoor seats without parking required. So ninety-two seats, are we giving the applicant the liberty to move the seats in and out? They can put a ninety-two seats anywhere combined?
Just muted myself. Um, in a sense, yes, they could move them, uh, around based on the two, the sizes of the two areas. It doesn't seem, uh, likely that it, um, that they would go below the number of indoor seats, which, um, I think is thirty or so to allow the sixteen outdoors, um, kind of freebies. So staff didn't feel the need to kind of specify that there has to be at least this number of indoor seats and a maximum of this number of indoor seats. So the short answer to your question is, yes, they could, they could vary the number slightly between indoor and outdoor.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding the, what we call a safety valve regarding the parking issue overflow, if it happened, is that a condition seven point one, one five?
Um, is what a part of condition seven point one five?
If there's some parking issue down the line, the applicant needs to come back and work with the city to address the issue. What is that condition?
Do you want me to read it?
No, no, just give me the number.
Oh, it's seven point fifteen.
Okay, it is. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, I don't see any other questions, um, of staff or the applicant. So I will open up the public hearing and Katie, I, uh, from what you said earlier, I assume we have no public input on this.
I just checked my email and we still don't have any, um, that I have been sent.
All right, thank you. So I will close the public hearing and I will open this up for planning commission discussion. Does anyone want to kick us off?
I'll kick us off, Jim.
All right, Chris.
I want to commend Michael on doing a fantastic job. Uh, when I see projects like this and, and designs like this, makes me wish I, you know, chose to be an architect. And, uh, you make it so, seem so effortless. I think you've done a great job and I could definitely see, uh, finding, uh, all the findings, the required findings. So I'm in support of this project.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to take tail on, on Chris on that. Michael, good job along with the owner and the team and of course, the RSC and the pre-look. I thought polished everything up. Um, I think it's going to be a great addition to the, that part of town. For the record, I'm just outside the five hundred foot circle on this project, so, uh, it's going to really help, uh, the end of the, that part of El Camerel. For the record, the trash collection in ours does not start until seven because Crystal Ball is the first block. And the first, the first truck that goes down this street is the black barrel and then it sequences through. I think the same driver goes back and gets different trucks. And so by, you know, ten or eleven o'clock, they come back, get the green barrel, and then by two o'clock, they get the recycled barrel. So that's kind of the way it sequences in the neighborhoods adjacent to where this restaurant is. Oh, it might be a different type truck with the rollers and type stuff in the enclosure compared to what done commercially, you know, residentially. But that's kind of the, seeing RNR as a modus operandi in the adjacent area. So overall, I think I, I can support the findings of the project and I think it's very well done and it's going to be a great addition to an area that's been blighted for so many years. Thank you.
Commissioner Wu?
Yes, uh, another well-designed building, um, you know, by our famous architect in town. I like it. Um, my, I do want to say that the city needs to establish a parking analysis criteria. Right now, the approach is all over the place. Some are rigidly following, um, some rigidly follow the ULI methodologies. Some, some take a questionable mix and a match. But regardless of, um, I see this conditioning seven point five, it kind of acts as a safety valve. Uh, otherwise I would have some hard time to make some of the findings regarding the parking. But, uh, I think it's, you know, it takes advantage of, uh, of vacant lots for staycation. It's, uh, another good piece of architecture on an important gateway of the city I would report it.
Bart?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm certainly very pleased with the architecture and working, um, Michael. And I think in fifty years, this may be on a historic registry for this, uh, period of the city doing gateways. And, uh, it's a distinct possibility. The, um, just two comments that, uh, but I am in favor of the project is, I'm afraid on the, uh, and I didn't say this is a design review, on the southwest corner where you turn, um, from the parking lot to the ramp with delivery trucks, you're probably going to need some kind of protection for that corner. You know, whether it's a curb or something to, because I, I see mirrors and all hitting that thing possibly and just becoming a maintenance issue. And, uh, the only thing I would like and, and Jim, uh, jump in on this too. The, oh, I heard justification on the parking study by, um, Mr. Wilhelm. The only thing I didn't hear was what justifies taking away the fifteen percent buffer? And maybe, uh, if Jim will allow him, uh, Mr. Wilhelm could respond to that.
Yes, please.
Back on. Thank you, Commissioner Crandall. The, the fifteen percent buffer in our analysis is basically the number of people that are going to be walking to the site, biking to the site, using a ride share and those non-vehicle modes. The combination of those and then, and the residents that live nearby, they can just simply walk to the facility would more than exceed, I think, the fifteen percent that, that would be considered a buffer.
Okay, Jim, I will accept that as a, a valid answer to our question because I believe there will be a lot of pedestrian access and I wouldn't be surprised if Don Brown and his friends just walk up the road and end up in the patio.
I'm walking up to Katie's corner.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. I, um, I like what, what, uh, Mr. Crandall said about this building. It'd be neat to see that happen in fifty years. It is, it is a very nice looking structure. I thought so in the very beginning. And some of the details are personal preference, but I think overall, this project is going to be very nice. And, um, just really well thought out, uh, given the spatial constraints. And, uh, I'm very much looking forward to seeing this one constructed. So I definitely support this project.
Okay. As for me, I, I have a big problem with the loss of the city's beloved, uh, top two site. So, you know, that would be my issue.
In Toronto, they top two.
That's right. Um, no, it's nice. This is, this is, is with many of us, it's my last planning commission meeting. So it's, it's nice to see, it's nice to close on a, on a new Michael Luna joint. And, um, it's, uh, it's as usual and as expected, it's, it's, uh, very finely done. Uh, I'm sure the design review had some input for you and, and I'm happy to see, you probably did your usual good collaboration with them. And, you know, by the time it gets to us, um, we obviously have some questions, but it's a very fine project. It's, um, I, I, I was surprised that this lot isn't an M U three. I was surprised to hear that. But, you know, I, I would have expected it to be. But it is another step, another early step in the realization of, um, mixed use in that area, which we've been wanting to do for a long time and, you know, was, you know, defined in the general plan. So that's wonderful to see. um as well. And I'm not going to take up your time by repeating my colleagues' comments, but I'm just happy to see um such a wonderful improvement um on that corner. Oh, I did have one observation. If I'm not mistaken, M R K Public is right across the street on the corner there, right?
No.
No.
No. It's down a block. Okay. Uh, okay, then what I was thinking doesn't doesn't apply. So, um, all right. Well, thank you again, Michael, and I too uh will be um supporting this project. In spite of losing the top two site.
Chair, um, if you allow me to make a motion.
Sure.
I would like after eleven years to make my final motion if I could.
Okay, I give it to um Mr. Brown.
All right, and I'll listen for your second, Commissioner Wu.
This is my last meeting after eleven years, so I thought I'd go out on a Michael Luna project. Jason, thanks for hanging on as a family owner for many years and to this Mr. Sanjay, I guess you dropped off, but good luck with your project going forward. So I propose that the the City Planning Commission uh adopt resolution number P C twenty-one dash zero one zero, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving cultural heritage permit twenty dash one five two, site plan permit twenty dash one five three, conditional use permit twenty-one dash zero zero seven. The Valencia Building, a request to redevelop the former Top Toon site and construct a new two-story commercial building that includes a restaurant with outdoor dining on the first floor, office uses on the second floor, and shared parking at fifteen oh two South El Camino.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Wu. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Rulyn votes aye. We are in the end unanimous. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We're hoping for the best.
If I may, uh, I I I have to thank you all so very much for all of your kind words with regards to my efforts here in San Clemente, which is my town as well. And with all of so many of you leaving and Chris, I have not had the opportunity to meet you. This is the first time I've met you. Thank you also for your kind words. And thank you, uh, commissioners for your dedication and service to our community from all of, you know, for all of your hard work on the planning commission. I cannot imagine being able to do your job. Uh, and you guys have done such a great job and thank you. And thank you so much for your support of my work through the years.
Well, thank you, Michael. Thank you for the, thank you for the kind words and and for the contribution you've made to the city. So appreciate it.
And you've earned those words.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
And I I let and I will say, Michael, when I joined the planning commission about ten years ago, when your first project came along, I heard other commissioners say, oh, this is a Michael Luna project. This is, you know, we were expecting, you know, quality stuff. So just so you know, your reputation doesn't just sit with us. It's from previous commissions as well.
That's awesome. Cecilia, I hope you're taking notes.
No, continue to hold it on a continue holding him on high standards, Cecilia. Don't let him slack off.
Yeah, we 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 will continue. Cecilia, you should have continued to hold him, Michael, to a high standard. He's there. He's there.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a point of privilege, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Patel, quickly.
Um, uh, honorable councilman uh members, I I just want to thank you uh for your kind words. Um, I haven't done too many developments. I have done some with several cities. And to be honest, uh, San Clemente is uh above and beyond um all the cities that I've worked with. And I want to thank you. I want to thank Katie and everyone else. Um, uh, I I I will do my best with Michael and 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 the team to put a project that the city will be proud of for many years. And um, uh, I'm just filled with joy for a unanimous decision and I thank you all.
Well, thank you. And and um, I will say um that uh if you, uh, I'm very glad to hear that you had a good experience moving through the city because I know this had to be a complex project, a lot of different organizations. I'm sure it would be of great benefit to the staff if you just, you know, took a moment and mentioned to the city council um, the good work that staff has done and and um, uh, how you appreciate how they have marshaled your uh, your application through. They tend to hear, you know, the difficult stories. And so hearing a good one would be much appreciated by them, I'm sure.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Katie.
Okay, that is it for that item. Our next item is new business, of which we have none. Uh, item ten is old business. We have none. Uh, item eleven is reports of commissioners and staff. Um, I did have one observation uh for staff. Just I just really wanted to put a bug in your ear. Um, I don't have to tell you with six new planning commission members, your work is kind of cut out for you. I noticed that um the uh July seventh study session um has been canceled. Uh, and we've canceled a number of them recently. Uh, I would really recommend that you use as many study sessions as you can to start to train the new members of the planning commission. You know, I think, in fact, I believe Mal has kind of a planning commission one-on-one presentation he can do that um July seventh might be a good opportunity for that. And so they can get used to a little bit of, you know, procedure and findings and ethics and that sort of a thing and get some introduction to it before that that first meeting. Um, but of course, as you know, there's a lot to do. So some of those those following weeks, I I I would, you know, urge you to take advantage of those and start going over things like um, uh, uh, cultural heritage and things like that. So I just wanted to put that bug in your ear.
Yes, no, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, Chair Rulyn, we are working on a planning commission orientation session with um the appointees um before the end of this month. Um, that will have to agendize because it would fall under the Brown Act, but our goal is to get um comprehensive training um for the new appointees um before they're seated on um July seventh for their first meeting and then to use subsequent study sessions to do exactly what you described. Um, deep dive into the Brown Act, cultural heritage. Uh, we've got a whole list of things. So we've got a a training calendar um put together for for the new um for the new planning commissioners. So uh, we don't lose traction um as these development projects come before the commission for either recommendations or for approval.
Okay, great. That's great to hear. Thank you. And and um, speaking for myself and probably for others too, if you if there's, if you need to lean on any of the outgoing members for anything, you know, I'd be happy to um, you know, to help if there's a way, you know, that you'd like me to help out. So feel free to call if you want.
I know how to find you. Thank you.
Yes, you know my number.
Hey, here.
Okay. Any other uh, any other comments for reports of commissioners and staff?
Been a great eleven years. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff.
Yeah, and I I I'd like to say thanks to everybody. It's it's like we're losing a family here. It's uh been a team effort. No one person runs the place and uh we all work together to do the good work in the city and um, let's uh all keep in touch and hopefully get together soon.
Yeah, I I agree. And I I I'm sorry, Cecilia, just something, Dan?
Um, well, I I just wanted to say, um, you know, on behalf of the Community Development Department um and the Planning Division staff, I would like to thank you for your service to the city as planning commissioners. Um, you know, you showed commitment and dedication and you helped create um in some respects, um, as well as carry out the vision of the general plan. And you know, you always offered such good insight and analysis and um decision-making that was always in the interest of making projects better for the city. Um, you know, we as staff certainly benefited from from your expertise um as did all the projects that came before you. So it's it's an honor to have worked with all of you. Um, and thank you for your support of staff as well um to help us create a better built environment. Um, you know, we we can only do so much as as staff and um you know, you would always let us carry it across the finish line. So so thank you for that and we'll do our best to continue carrying forward that good work. So thank you. And and just one more thing, I wanted to just let the outgoing commissioners know, um, the council is going to be recognizing you at a meeting in September. Um, the city clerk is preparing plaques um for the outgoing commission members that they'll be presenting to you or the council will be presenting to you at a meeting in September.
Yeah, thank you very much, Cecilia. That's those are very kind words and and I hope you'll pass on the staff for us and certainly for me, the the pleasure it's been this last over a decade, really, in the various committees I've been on to work with staff. Um, I I've just found them so consistently, um, you know, professional, hardworking, conscientious. And, you know, sometimes doing all of those things very intelligently, right in the middle of the firing line. I've seen staff at moments with three, literally three different parties firing at them. And there's no way they're going to make any of them happy, but they're still in there working and fighting. And sometimes, you know, they get you know, they get shots, you know, unfair shots taken at them and that sort of a thing. And yet they they still, you know, maintain their equanimity, or at least it looks us like they maintain their equanimity and are um and continue to be professional and helpful to, you know, people, even sometimes when people don't realize that staff is being uh very helpful with them. So I'm I'm very grateful for the opportunity I've had to work with staff and the people on staff over the years. And um, I hope you'll communicate uh that to the staff members for us.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Yes. So Jim, I I would like to also jump in and comment. Uh, it's just, it's been a, it's been a uh, a real honor to serve with all y'all on the on the commission and and Cecilia, your staff has been amazing all throughout the ebbs and flows. It's been good. And we've had some just top-notch representation, hardworking folks, great planners. I, they're all gonna do so well in their careers. And it's just, it's been, it's been just a joy to work with all of you. And it saddens me to leave. It really does. I didn't, you know, I'm not one to get very emotional about things uh at all, but this is is really, uh, it's really been important and it's it's been bigger than all of us, you know, to be a part of uh, part of the city and the way we have and to serve the way we have. It's it's just been just such a blessing. So thank you to you all. You've all become like Bart said, like family. And I'm gonna miss you guys and and I'll look for you around town, all of you. And I'm looking forward to seeing you. Y'all take care.
Yeah, tell Eric Son to keep his hands off your department.
Yeah, no doubt. Second to that one.
And if you want me to, I'll tell him for you.
And Jim, now might even be a good time for the many or the uh departing commissioners to thank uh Mal and Eileen White, the recording secretary.
Yep, absolutely.
Yes. Years.
Yeah, I mean, I miss seeing you both. It's it's been a long time since I've seen you guys, but you've been here and you've been you know, following what we've been doing. So so thank you. And and Mal, I've learned a lot from you as well.
Yeah, I want to thank you. Thanks, uh, all my colleagues, thanks to staff, the city and the staff, thanks to Mail and uh, uh, recording secretary, Ms. Eileen um for all your work and the support over the last sixty years. I'm I'm happy with the effort over the last sixty years. Well, Commissioner Brown served eleven years, Commissioner Crandall is continuing. So um, they've served well more than sixty years, but over the last couple of years with this commission, I think we've we've achieved a quite a few things and I've seen the positive impact to the community from the planning commission's work, which makes me feel happy.
Okay. And lastly, I want to uh thank everyone, Mal and all the commissioners, myself also. I'm grateful for all all the learning I've had uh on this commission. And it's been meaningful to me. It's been meaningful um because I felt like I actually assisted uh with all your help and the preserving and charm of this city that I love, the city by the sea. Um, and I also love the fact that I was part of protecting the the historically significant sites here. So I love the city and I've just been, it's been a joy um being on the commission. So thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Don, did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to follow up with also for Mal and particularly Eileen, who's been my recording secretary now for like thirty years. I remember when Petches finally gave her the key to the old building over there she'd been in by herself.
Took her twenty-five years to get that key.
Twenty or twenty-five years before Petch finally gave her the key. So she, we could all get in the building together. And I remember that moment and uh, and she certainly had earned it, earned it over the years. She'd been a real stalwart all the way and and so it also to the staff and the that upfront, make sure these projects come through and they're polished and they get to us. A lot of hard work there, but you know, we got, we got general plans to work with and my only charge is Cecilia, start working on those specific plans and uh, let's get her done. So thanks.
So not to, not to extend this too long, but I I I did want to say maybe one more thing. My fellow commissioners who are retiring. Um, uh, we actually do have a some special knowledge. We have learned how certain things work in the city. Um, you know, who does them, how hard or easy it is to get something done. And something that you just might want to think about um, uh, if you haven't already done, I know, you know, Don has done a lot of things in the city already, but um, you know, outside of planning commission. But you're a resource to the city now in terms of, you know, people who are out there trying to get something done, trying to improve something in their neighborhood, and they haven't worked with the city. They don't really know where to go or what to do or what's next. And I've done a little bit of that sort of in my interregnum between the two two times that I've served. And it can be a great benefit, you know, they don't, because it's it it can be revelatory to some of the people. And um, and and they can be very grateful for having someone who knows that information and can help them uh achieve their their goals in the community. So just something, just something to think about going forward and remember that you've got now some some special knowledge and some special ability that can be of service to the community still. Anything else? If not, I'll interchange a motion for adjournment.
Well, I'll move that the planning commission adjourned to the next regular meeting of the planning commission, which will be held on July seventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M by a teleconference.
I'll say, and I will, and okay, motion by Blackwell, second by Kozinski. I'll call the roll for the last time. Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
And Rulyn votes aye. So we are adjourned and thank you, everybody. It's been a real treat.